Yeah, okay. I would like to welcome all of you who are joining me here in the room as well as our virtual attendees. So everyone online, hey. My name is Rachel Brooks and I am the Coordinator of the Office of eLearning at North Carolina Central University in Durham, North Carolina. Go Eagles! And in my role as Coordinator, I am the lead of a robust office of two for nearly 700 faculty on our campus. And we're responsible for helping our faculty design and deliver online courses. But we also work with our faculty that teach face-to-face courses because they are expected to incorporate technology and use our LMS for more than just posting the syllabus. And so in doing so, we have to make sure that we are very intentional about ensuring the content that we put online is accessible. And so today's presentation is going to talk about one of those events in our journey to make our campus as accessible as possible. And so I'm delighted to share with you this information in a session I like to call Quality and the BOT. I would like to also share that in addition to my role as Coordinator of eLearning, I'm also my campus's Quality Matters Coordinator and I am co-chair of our University of North Carolina System Quality Matters Council. And so I am one of the point persons as it relates to QM in the state of North Carolina for the UNC system. So we have three objectives today. I wanted to keep it very targeted, very focused. And so our three objectives are first, just identifying what led to the creation of this policy. Because it was not necessarily on our radar actually creating a policy. That wasn't our goal in the beginning. And so I want us to look at some of the factors that contributed to that. We're also going to talk about, as it relates to this policy, what are the expectations for our content developers? And I specifically reference our content developers in addition to the course developers. Because this expectation of providing accessible digital content goes beyond just the classroom. We think about the various ways in which our faculty and our staff communicate with our students. And in doing so, we want to make sure that if it is in a digital format, it's accessible to our learners. And then we're also going to do a little work. And I would like for you to think about some of the resources that are available on your campuses to put together an accessibility policy. Or if you already have one, to take a moment to evaluate what are the components of that and to share with our colleagues here in the room and online so that we can help further this mission of providing accessible digital content. So before we get started, let's give my voice a break. I'm losing my voice of all things. But we are going to have a little conversation and I'm curious to know, what does digital accessibility mean to you? When you hear this phrase, "digital accessibility," what does that mean to you? And I invite our virtual audience to also share some of their ideas regarding digital accessibility. So we were going to do in kind of at our tables, but I think it would be worthwhile to just shout it out. And for accessibility purposes, I will reiterate what I hear in the room. But what are some of the ideas, some of the concepts that you think about? What comes to mind? Some of the successes, some of the fears maybe, as it relates to digital accessibility? We have a mic going around the room. Who would like to share?
So it means a course that is built for all learners before they get there, not a course that's adapted for learners once they get there.
Excellent, excellent. I love that idea of being proactive versus being reactive. And you'll see when we talk about some of these factors, it was very reactionary. But we're trying to move to that position of being proactive and making sure that our courses are designed with accessibility in mind from the beginning. I think I saw a hand over here at this table, the white swag? Nope, okay, sorry, I put you on the spot. Are there any other ideas regarding digital accessibility?
Just the incredible breadth of what accessibility can mean.
Yes.
And kind of the lack of guidance on, that could be alt tags, it could be, you know, screen readers, it could be visual contrast. It could also be, one of the things, I just went to a meeting on this two days ago. And one of the things that I hadn't thought about until then was the accommodation for the content of a video. Not just the words of a video. And that's something that we hadn't thought about. And thinking about that scares me a little bit. Because we're a robust office of three.
Right. I understand. And one of the issues that we've experienced and this kind of contributed to one of those factors is that unfortunately, this conversation of digital accessibility should have occurred on the front end. But with as quickly as technology has moved, we find ourselves, again, being reactionary. We find ourselves recognizing some of these issues, a lot of these issues, that would have been great if we could have taken care of in the beginning. But here we are. So the question is, what do we do? So hopefully I can help provide a little context to that answer. So just to give a little bit of some background, he cute, I don't know him. The free, what is it, um, fair use image online. But just to provide a little understanding of why this is important. Out of our public school students in 2016, 13% of them received some type of special education services. And of those special education services, 34% were related to special needs accommodations regarding disabilities. That's a lot of students. What's troubling is that when our students come to our campuses, they are the ones, the onus is on them. They are the ones who are required to disclose that they need accommodations. They are the ones who are required to register each term, each term, because accommodations change, with our various offices and Student Accessibility Services, Disability Services. This data from 2015 points out that only 2.38% of learners that had IUPs in the K-12 system, self-reported when they came to our campuses. Only 2.8%, excuse me, of our undergraduates have self-reported. And so what that tells us is that we have a lot of students that are in our courses. We have a lot of students that are on our campuses that require accommodations but are not receiving them because we do not know who they are. They are not required, we can't obligate them to self-disclose, but they're here. So what do we do about it? This is also important because the number of online students is growing exponentially. We have also seen that with our online students, they do not want plain boring courses. They want courses, and I don't mean you have to put all the bells and whistles in the course, but they want courses that are engaging, that are exciting, that allow them opportunities for active learning, that consider learning, a variety of learning preferences in the course. And in addition to that, the way in which we can address those is providing multiple ways in which learners can engage in the course content. But we have to do so responsibly, keeping in mind that our learners come to us with a variety of needs. So this was brought to our attention. One, I mean, we knew that we wanted to make our content accessible. We wanted to make our courses as rigorous in the online environment as they are in the face-to-face environment. And so in 2014, we started what we called our NCCU Course Design Cohort, our QM Course Design Cohort. And it was our first group of faculty who had already taken the APP QMR, but were dedicated to preparing their courses for QM review. So this is the first time we did this. We didn't really know what we were getting into. And we came across, we were using the fifth edition of the rubric. And we came across Specific Review Standards 7.2, which tells us that we need to make sure we are linking to our university's accessibility policy as well as our accessibility services. Now, we knew all about the accessibility services. That wasn't a problem. We could go directly to that website. We could provide the location. You gotta go down in the basement for some reason. Like, we changed the location for accessibility purposes. But we knew how to give that information, but we weren't quite sure about the accessibility policy. And many of us thought, well, that's that statement that comes from the provost's office that we're supposed to put in the syllabus, right? The syllabus statement does not an accessibility policy make. And so we investigated, we did our research to find out, okay, well, what does this mean? What does this entail? We looked at other campuses. We looked at some of the litigation that was out there and recognized that this is something we need to take care of now. And so that Course Design Cohort that I was referencing included faculty from a variety of disciplines. We had nine faculty on board. I was part of that cohort, representing the Spanish side, hola. And so we realized that this was something that was important. And we started kind of drafting our own language for that cohort as we were preparing for QM review. But coming out of that, we recognized we need to do a lot more work to make sure that we do have a true accessibility policy for our campus. And so we created what we called our, it was basically a task force, our accessibility policy task force. And it was composed of a number of individuals from a variety of areas on campus. Of course, our Office of eLearning, we included faculty members. So we had a faculty member from our Department of Psychology. You'll see a little bit further down, we have another faculty member. We had our then Director of Student Disability Services, which is now our Office of Student Accessibility Services. We had our Coordinator of the Office of Faculty Professional Development. We had various members of our Division of Extended Studies. We had our Information Technology Services Office. And as I had mentioned, we had another faculty member from our special education programs. So we got together, did a lot of brainstorming, little weeping. But we put together a draft policy to bring to our faculty, to bring to the various stakeholders on our campus to actually try to move this along. And so this is just, this is just a breakdown of some of, or not some of, of the process by which we had to submit this policy, to have it enacted on our campus. And so as you see, we had multiple iterations that we drafted. And we did so in consultation with our university's legal team. So we reached out to the legal council to make sure that we were incorporating a language that made sense, that we were abiding by the various federal laws, state laws, the statutes, any type of local considerations, as well as university considerations that we needed to keep in mind. We did have this reviewed and approved by our faculty senate as well as our academic planning committee. We shopped it to the department chairpersons to sit down and engage with them and explain the importance of it so that they could then communicate that with their faculty. It was approved by the dean's council. And then we presented it to our university's Board of Trustees on June 28th, 2016. And it was unanimously approved and enacted as a policy for our institution the very next day. So I will make sure that you all are able to have access to that so that you can see what the policy looks like in detail. Yes, we have a question? Okay, so the question was, what was the timeline from the start of the development through the adoption? So we started as soon as our cohort, the first few persons submitted their courses for QM review. So that was around June of 2015. So about a year, it was about a year that we immediately put our task force together. And as I had said, we drafted multiple iterations. We were ready to send this to our faculty senate, I believe, in early January of 2016. And so that approval process occurred during about a six-month period, ending, of course, at the end of June when it was brought to our Board of Trustees. So the policy is approved. We need to make sure our faculty and staff know about this. And so what we started with was what we called our Accessibility Basics Module. Our first concern was, we just need you to know that this is a policy, okay? Here you go, more policy. What does it entail? What does it look like? And so this Accessibility Basics course, it was only a one-hour in-person training that we did, was an opportunity for us to introduce the components of the policy and to answer any questions that our faculty and staff had about it. So the Basics Module first started out focusing on the various policies and the purpose of that training. So we went over the various laws that required our compliance and why we needed to have a policy in the first place. We then talked about what is accessibility, specifically as defined in the policy. So what does accessibility mean in a general context, but what does it mean specifically at our institution, at NCCU? We then went over the faculty and developer responsibilities. So as you can imagine, with an office of two, our faculty, well, our approach to training is more so, let's empower the faculty to be able to do for themselves. And we are here to consistently support them. And so when our faculty are preparing their courses, they're not just instructing them, but they are developing their courses in consultation with our office. And so in doing so, we wanted to make sure that they knew how to create accessible courses. We changed the approach to even some of the basic practices that we incorporate. So for example, when you're creating a Word document and you want to include bold or you want to include italics, we show them, don't use the little buttons that are up there. Those are basically for aesthetic purposes. Use the styles. Use strong. Use emphasis. That's what includes coding that speaks to screen readers so that you are then able to ensure that your learners who are using screen readers actually know that this is indeed emphasized, that it's italicized, that it is indeed bold because it was coded as strong. So we taught them how to change the way that they think about creating content. And then we went over the procedures for ensuring accessibility. So this talks about what are the resources that are available on campus? What are the services that are there? I know you had mentioned, it's scary. This is scary and it's overwhelming, especially when we have faculty who have multiple responsibilities. They're not just teaching. They're researchers. They are providing service to the university, to their colleges. On our campus, we are, our motto is truth and service. And so there is an expectation that our faculty participate in community service throughout the academic year. So there are so many responsibilities that they have and we don't want them to feel that they're alone because they're not alone. So this part of the module was specifically about identifying what are the services and resources on campus to assist them in ensuring that their content is accessible. And then finally, resolutions and accountability. Because, you know, we can't say that this is here and there's no system in place to ensure that our learners truly are receiving content that is accessible. And so we talk about what are those procedures that are in place to support the use of this policy, the consistent use of this policy across campus. So as it relates to what we looked at when we were putting this policy together, we pulled from NCCU's commitment regarding accessibility. We looked at the fact that NCCU is dedicated to providing this educational environment that all learners, you are accepted on our campus, you are here, we are here to support all of you. And so because of that commitment, we recognize that it is essential that accessible content is made available, that accommodations are provided to our learners that need them. And in doing so, we took into consideration these specific laws. So the Americans with Disabilities Act, as well as the Amendment Act. And as that relates to digital content, Section 504 and 508 of the Rehabilitation Act and how those pertain to digital content. We utilize the Quality Matters Education, Higher Education Rubric. And as I had mentioned, because of the time in which we were doing it, we were using the fifth edition. The Web Content Accessibility Guidelines 2.0. We also have specific procedures on our campus as it relates to web content. And so we incorporated that. And then there's also the North Carolina General Statute 168A7, which tells us that any covered government institution is required to ensure that there is no discrimination of persons, qualified persons. And anyone who's accepted to our campus that has a disability, they should not be intentionally or unintentionally excluded. And appropriate accommodations should be provided to allow for their full participation. So as far as our content developers, I know it sounds scary, but the idea of what they were expected to do is, one, make sure that all of your, as best as you can, do your due diligence to make sure that all of your content is accessible for all of your learners. This essentially is, you know, reinforcing that idea of universal design. If it is good for some, if it supports access for some, it will support access for many and hopefully for all. And if not, we will address that. Usually, we address that when we are notified by our Office of Student Accessibility Services regarding learners who do require accommodations. We talk about why that is important and why we must comply with that. And what are the resources that are available on campus to help contextualize what that looks like in a course? We also encourage our faculty to seek that training and support. They must include accessibility statements. And this touches on the QM rubric when we talk about providing accessibility statements for all of the technology in the course. Here, we're talking about all of the digital content that they have. If they're using any other vendors or any other products, they need to make sure they provide that accessibility statement for their learners. And then we also made sure that faculty were aware that this is a conversation they're going to have when they are engaging in their faculty evaluations. It's not meant to be punitive. It is meant to diagnose, similar to what we do with the QM rubric and we're looking through courses. It's meant to diagnose areas for need and how we can support faculty. And then it's also a great way to highlight the commitment that our faculty are putting into providing accessible content. Because we recognize this is often a labor of love. And so we want to make sure that we are encouraging and supporting our faculty and highlighting their successes and making their learning spaces accessible for their students. Now, I did mention that there are a number of services on our campus to support our faculty as well as resources. And so we talk about what our learners should also be able to do if they recognize that they are having issues accessing content in their courses. So first and foremost, talk to your instructor. Don't jump up the hierarchy ladder and, you know, immediately call the legal council for the campus. We don't need to do that. Talk to the instructor. Let them know that there is a problem. And what we encourage instructors to do is that when they include that statement in the syllabus about accessibility services and how we as an institution are required to do this, follow up with another little statement saying that you welcome conversation about any accommodations that your learners are receiving. So if you are determined to receive an accommodation from the office, know that you can contact me for us to sit down or virtually discuss what that looks like in this particular course. Opening that line of communication for your learners really creates that sense of community. It minimizes in our online courses, this feeling of transactional distance, that separation that learners feel from their instructor in their class. And it provides, it truly demonstrates that that expectation, that this is in fact a welcoming environment and that they are supported. And then we encourage faculty to respond. If your students reach out to you about this, respond to them. Let them know that you hear them, you are aware, and that you are present to make sure that these changes are actually included in the course. If our faculty are not sure of how to make content accessible, we encourage them to reach out to our Office of Student Accessibility Services. And what they will do is, if necessary, they will reach out to ITS if it is a system issue that might need to be addressed. If it is a pedagogical or anthropological issue that needs to be addressed, they will reach out to the Office of eLearning. And then we will work with the faculty to consider, okay, well, how can we modify this? How can we present this in an additional format that supports your needs, your learners with diverse needs? Now, if that does not occur, and let's say, you know, a faculty member either does not respond to that or decides that, you know, nah, I'm just, it's fine, they'll be okay. The student can file a grievance. And we, in our accessibility policy, we wanted our learners to know what avenues were in place to support them in getting assistance. So they can file a disability agreement, disability grievance. And the faculty member is notified of the grievance. So they have an additional seven business days to then reach out and get that support and make it happen. As a last resort, if we cannot come to some form of understanding as far as how that content can be provided in an accessible format, then the solution is the faculty member will be requested to remove that digital content. I can tell you now, since the policy has been in place and it's been about three years, we have not had to ask anyone to remove digital content. We have done our hard work of making sure that they were able to get that content accessible in some format so that all of their learners can engage. So in addition to the Accessibility Basics Module, we also wanted to give them an opportunity to build on their understanding about some of these specialized areas. So faculty were invited to attend all of them. But in creating this certificate of completion, and I love this, in creating this certificate of completion as it relates to excellence and accessibility on NCCU's campus, we challenged them to take the Accessibility Basics Module and then to complete two of our mini modules. Now, these mini modules, as you see, focused on creating closed captioning and transcripts for videos or audio files, inserting videos and images with alternative text, creating accessible PDFs and Word documents. I will, you know, expand that to Excel, essentially any Microsoft Office product. And then also ensuring accessibility within the learning management system in the course, in the course shell. So we're a Blackboard campus. And so we talked about, okay, well, what does accessibility look like in Blackboard? What are the resources that you have? So each of these modules ended with a quick diagnostic quiz. And as long as they earn a minimum of 80% on the quiz, then they would receive credit for having completed that module. They can complete it as many times as they'd like. And they still have access to it with all of the resources that are included after they've completed it. So this is just a timeline to kind of get into, what did it look like when we actually implemented this accessibility policy? And then the training. So it was approved at the end of June. And immediately in July, we started aggressively training our faculty. So we started out with our chairs. We were able to, during the chairs meeting at the beginning of the academic year, we met with all of our chairs and we provided this one-hour training as well as our new faculty during the new faculty orientation. In October is when we required the Accessibility Basics Module for our DE faculty. So for our faculty that we're teaching at a distance, as well as our faculty that we're teaching online, we coordinate also with our community colleges. And so literally at a distance, some of our faculty would go and travel and teach at the community colleges. So they were included in that as well as our online and our hybrid faculty. And so the expectation was, we challenge, we gave them a challenge, we didn't make you do it. But we gave them a challenge that by the end of the semester, we wanted to make sure that they had taken the Accessibility Basics Module so that moving into the spring semester, you know, everything would, all of the paperwork would smoothly show up so that they would have online classes in the spring. But they were actually very interested in taking the workshop. And in November, we rolled out our mini modules where our faculty were able to take those specialized courses and to learn those tips and tricks for making some of those specific types of media available in an accessible format. We continued that through in January with our new faculty orientation for our faculty that joined us in that spring semester. And then we offered the accessibility And then we offered the accessibility basics module face-to-face and online. So these are available online for our faculty again in March. And during that period of time, we were able to train 225 faculty, staff, and administrators. So it didn't stop there. Now, I, I will disclose that we did have some transition where our, we had some transition in our Student Accessibility Services office as far as new leadership. And so during that time, in the interim, our office continued to provide accessibility training in some format for our faculty. We made sure we provided not only a workshop each semester, but then also on a request basis from our kind of à la carte menu of workshops. We were invited by a variety of departments and sometimes entire schools and colleges to come on their campus. I mean, to come in their space and to provide this training. So this is just an example of, and there's a link to it, so you can access that and it is in an accessible format. But this is an example of our fall schedule, this fall. And so as you see last, or last, last week, we provided a workshop on ensuring digital accessibility. And here are some of the other ways in which we provide this accessibility training to our faculty. So we talk about specifically, what does this look like in the syllabus as well as the learning management system? And so that workshop was in collaboration with one of our faculty from our visual impairments program as well as a colleague, well, the new Director of Student Accessibility Services. And so we've already had conversations about re-upping this, this accessibility training as a collaborative effort. Making your course accessible and usable, we have, is your online course accessible for all? We had one focusing on universal design. And then we have also provided a number of applying the Quality Matters workshops, of course emphasizing General Standard 8 regarding accessibility and usability. So another way, because, you know, sometimes our faculty are like, okay, well, that's great. Where do I start? I have so much, I don't know what to do. Or some of our faculty are coming on campus and aren't really sure, okay, well, what does quality look like? What does an accessible course look like at NCCU? And so we created what we call our best practice template. It is a template and is meant to be used as such, to be modified as needed. We provide guidelines on how to modify it to keep it accessible. But this is a head start for our faculty to help them out. It was created with Quality Matters, the Quality Matters Sixth Edition rubric in mind. And we talk about the importance, for example, of creating a course with modular structure. What does that look like? Why do we have the fonts that we have? What is the color selection and why is that important? And we also included, as you see at the bottom, it says, under the resources section, we have NCCU resources, which includes a list that we update at least every term. Usually, if we find out that something else has been added, we will update it. But it includes the accessibility policies as well as privacy policies for the various, the various technologies that we know our faculty are using in their courses. And so if we find out someone is using something else, we'll add it to the list. And then in their own courses, they can copy it, but they can delete whatever is not applicable to them. So we do that to try to lighten that load. We have a question. Yes, thank you. So the question was, how successful essentially has this been for faculty to utilize? It has been very successful. So, and not straying away too far, but as it relates to Quality Matters on NCCU's campus, we have been very fortunate in having support not only from our faculty, but also from our senior level administration, all the way up to our chancellor. So much so that Quality Matters is explicitly stated in our Academic Affairs Strategic Plan as well as our University Strategic Plan. So Quality Matters and the Rubric Standards are interwoven into what we do at NCCU. And so for a lot of our faculty, this is just business as usual. This is, this is what we do. And so we listened to them. And one of the reasons why we created this template was because we heard from, it would be nice to see examples. It would be nice to get a head start in doing this. And so this was created from faculty feedback with faculty input. And so, and what we also do with this is we'll take it to the different programs, to the different departments that they're working collectively, and we will personalize it to their needs. So for example, our EMPA program has a similar, our Executive Masters in Public Administration, yes. They have a similar template, but it's specific to the needs of that area. So by including that faculty buy-in, it has really supported adoption of these approaches. Yes. That's a great question. So that, the, the question was, are, are the training modules informational? Or do we require the faculty to produce something for us to then evaluate? I'm very glad you asked that question. When we started out, because the policy was enacted, at first, the modules were designed to be informational. And the only output, so to speak, that faculty contributed was their submission of the quiz. Since that time, we have prepared our, it's basically a, a, a teaching module or teacher training for our online faculty and our face-to-face faculty can take it as well, that focuses on a variety of instructional design components, a variety of instructional components. Accessibility is one of them. And in these modules, they are being asked to produce artifacts that we then evaluate, provide feedback, specifically keeping in mind the context of our university. And so we are actually piloting that with our faculty this semester. So to answer your question, yes, it was informational, but based on, you know, it was because we needed to get it out as soon as we did. But now that we've had time to really think about it, we've spent a little over a year putting together those modules that would allow much more active engagement. So many of you have seen these before. These are referring to some of the specific review standards from the Quality Matters rubric that we get our faculty to think about. And so often, our faculty's introduction to Quality Matters isn't jumping right into the APP QMR, it's in conversation with us. It's through attending workshops. And so we thought of a way to make the rubric, with QM's permission, a little more palatable, a little more understandable for our faculty. And it was as simple as just changing the specific review standards into questions. But changing them into questions. And so for some of these questions, as you see, we personalize them to go ahead and give them the resources they needed to answer those, those questions. So for example, regarding specific review standard 7.2, we asked, you know, do your course instructions provide or articulate or link to NCCU's accessibility policy for course design? If they don't, grab it and put it in your course. And the Office of Student Accessibility Services. We asked them about the course navigation, facilitating ease of use, facilitating readability. And we talked to them about what does that mean? What does that look like? And our faculty have access to other courses that have already met these standards with permission of those instructors. So they can see what that looks like in a variety of disciplines. It makes it real for them and it helps them to understand how flexible the rubric was designed to support creativity, to support the, the faculty members' approach to teaching the course, but still ensuring consistency of that quality in our instruction. And then it also makes sure that they understand that they need to provide accessible content as it relates to the webpages, the documents, images, text, as well as the media. And it talks about what does that mean when we refer to multimedia facilitating ease of use? Why is that important for learners to be able to control how they are engaging with the media? How is that accessible and how does that support all? And then finally, making sure that they're aware of the fact that they need to include vendor accessibility statements and that we've actually done it for them and they can just modify that list as needed. So we have a few moments, and I think what I'd like to do is talk about the, the, the handout that you have. And for those of you who are joining us virtually and don't have access to the handout, we're going to talk about some of these, some of these considerations that are worthwhile to, to think about as you are preparing either an accessibility policy for your campus or evaluating the one that you have, or supporting colleagues that are thinking about doing it on their own campuses. So we're going to talk about that briefly, but I do want to entertain any questions that you have. And I thank you for asking questions as we were going along with the presentation. So that first part of the sheet talks about creating the plan. And as you're creating the plan, you want to think about who on your campus are the persons with whom you should collaborate, okay? Who are the ones who can contribute to this, the need that you have? Who can identify needs that you probably were not aware of, okay? And then do your research, research. Reach out to your colleagues in your system, reach out to colleagues in other states and find out what are the considerations that you should explore? Specifically as it relates to federal laws, to local, local ordinances that you have. What does it mean to be accessible in your area, on your campus? And then you want to think about building buy-in. One of the ways that we thought about building buy-in was also thinking about, okay, well, how are we already getting faculty involved? And how can we integrate this in a very organic way with our faculty? So you want to think about what makes sense in your area. Does it make more sense to connect with senior level administration and to share that? Does it make sense to talk to your faculty senate chairperson? To have a conversation with them and to be able to explain so that they can bring that to the group or you can have time on the agenda to share that with the group? If you are in senior leadership, what does that look like and what does that mean? And then you also want to think about implementing your plan. So let's say you've gotten to the point that you have a plan, it's been approved by your board and you're ready to go. What do you do next? Usually, you would include that in your plan that you presented to the board. But you want to think about what does this look like on your campus? What is the most effective way to disseminate this information? So the sheets that you have just provide a little space for you to think about that. But as I had mentioned, in the few minutes that we have together, we have about seven minutes. I want to entertain any questions that you have. All questions are welcome. Ooh, okay, all right. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, can you explain some of the pushback that you've gotten?
Absolutely. That was the fun part. Okay. So some of the pushback that we have gotten is, I have no time to do this. Why wasn't I told this in the beginning? Let me first address that second question. As I had mentioned earlier, this unfortunately was not on many of our minds. We, we were, were so focused on trying to be the next big thing, to do the next big thing, that many of our colleagues, many of our peers, our learners, were left behind and forced to adapt. I'll share something a little personal. One of my, one of my best girlfriends has degenerative eye disease. And I, she has provided the context to allow me to see the world as she does, to experience the world as she does. She's amazing. She's getting her second master's degree. She is a teacher, she is a mother. She's, you know, the daughter of, you know, the highest ranking Black Belt woman in the world. Like, she's, she's amazing. But she is experiencing some of the most unnecessary obstacles because she lives in a world as an academic that was not designed for her. And so I challenged faculty to think about what that feels like, what that may, what does that mean? To think about the commitment that they have to the rigor of what they're presenting, their dedication to, to working with their learners. And, you know, know this wasn't a consideration originally, but we have not only responsibility, it should be a desire of ours to make sure that all of our learners are successful. Now it gets to how do we do that? And many of our institutions have, you know, do not have unlimited budgets to be able to, to, to support a lot of what goes into this. And so I challenge our institutions to think creatively about the resources that we do have. Unfortunately, our faculty can't just say, hey, here's my content, can you make this accessible? But what they do have, for example, are learners. In fact, our, gosh, two weeks ago, our history department needed to pretty expeditiously prepare some really interesting interviews for, for use in this digital project that they were doing with another institution in our area. And so we, you know, they were like, I don't know what to do. How do I do this? I don't know how to do this. I don't have time. And so I had asked, well, do you have some exceptional learners? He was like, yeah, I do. And so I said, well, send them to us, we will teach them some very basics, okay? We will teach them how to transcribe, we will teach them how to close caption quickly. We'll do, we'll, we'll go back and check their work. But we will teach them, we can scale what we are doing by utilizing the resources that we have. And so our job is to kind of back them off the ledge and to point to what, you don't even know what is available to you. And so that's our goal. So to, to answer your question, it's, there has been pushback. But we have yet to find pushback that we can't offer some type of constructive, actionable response. And then we do the due diligence to make it happen, to connect them with those resources. It doesn't just stop at the conversation. I think there was another hand that way? Yes.
We are trying to implement accessibility, that's, that's a sub because we are trying to implement Quality Matters, right?
Yes.
So accessibility is like a sub. So what, what, can you talk about it being holistic? Starting with implementing Quality Matters, the eight rubrics?
Yes.
Then, then kind of narrowing down to accessibility. Can you give us kind of a holistic picture?
Okay. Ooh, challenge accepted. Okay. So I was asked to give a holistic picture of implementing not just accessibility, but Quality Matters. Like I said, our approach is to change the way we do what we do. If when you come to our office, all you get is, all we're doing is going to be accessible and you're going to get these standards, okay? We had to sit down and really think about how do we change our behavior? How do we change the conversation? As I had said, faculty buy-in has been huge. And so we have listened to them and responded to their needs. So many of our faculty, for example, and sometimes that means try, that means changing the focus that was originally brought to us. So one example of that is our faculty have come to us with ideas about, you know, hey, I want to learn more about this tool, this technology that I want to use in my course. And we're like, all right, well, you know, we don't start with technology first. But, okay, yeah, sure, let's talk about that. So I spoke with my instructional designer and he came up with this amazing idea of what we call Appy Hour. And Appy Hour is, we will either partner with one of our technology, we'll, we'll connect with one of our technology partners for a tool that we already have a license on our campus to use, and it might be underutilized or, or it might be something new that they're interested in. And so as I had mentioned, we engrain Quality Matters into everything, you know, we, because design obviously is a critical component of that, and then we build on the delivery piece. So Appy Hour is a great example of that, where we talk about, one, you know, we're looking at the First General Standard, course introduction. And we're making sure that they understand what it is that they need to be doing with that tool. Having them engage with it in a low stakes way at the beginning of the course, for them to kind of be able to work out the bugs and figure out what it is that they need. We talk about how this tool should align with their course level objectives and their module level objectives. It shouldn't be something that they just add on because they think it's, it's nice and it's interesting. We talk about how it might be utilized for formative and summative assessments, taking on a general standard three. If they are incorporating it as part of the instructional practice, as well as, you know, when they're engaging in the activities, we talk about what does this look like? How user-friendly is it? What are the anthropological benefits of it? How can they use it for true engaged learning? How they should include the various policies, the accessibility and the privacy policies. But then we also talk about in selecting these tools, these are the considerations that you need to make as it relates to whether or not it's accessible. This is what you should look for. You should look at the accessibility policy and the accessibility team that that tool has. has. Does it support your learners? And if for some reason it doesn't, for example, I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on blast, Prezi, Prezi's not quite accessible yet. They are working on it because they are receiving the pressure from our campuses. And so we talk to our faculty about what that means. Well, general standard eight point, let's see, we were talking about, if you're using it for instructional practices, it's a webpage, I'm at eight point three or eight point four if you want to talk about multimedia. But we emphasize the fact that if you are going to use it, then you need to make sure you provide alternative means. So if you're creating a Prezi, that means that you also need to provide some type of document, because we don't want you to take away from, that doesn't mean you need to water down your course, but it needs to mean that you ensure accessible access to that content in a way that's still meaningful for your learners. And so in doing that and working with our faculty, we show them and we address the needs to get their interest, but at the same time, we make sure that quality matters is infused in what we do. You're welcome. I think we are at our time. Is there one question from our virtual audience?
There was a bunch, I'll just send them.
Oh, no, okay, send them to me. Virtual audience, thank you for joining me. I will be sure to answer your questions. Thank you all. Information up here. If you, if you would like to get in touch with me, I have my business cards up front, but please feel free to reach out with any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.